All right, awesome. Welcome, everybody, back to in-person planning board meetings. This is very exciting. I haven't seen any of these people in over a year. So it's good to be back. We're gonna start the meeting now. And we're gonna jump right in with continuous continuing business. Do we have a representative here? I guess this will be a little window, so I mean, do you just want to go over? So all the presentations are gonna be up on the screen, so that'll be shared with soon.
Yes, yeah, so for everybody who's here, probably most of you are here for an application. Either if you're presenting your application, you see I have an application. So the way that our rules are now is that you have to submit all the materials prior to the meeting. Any materials you want to use at the meeting have to have been presented to us. So we put them on the website and they're available to the public. We'll give them the same time that the board is making a decision. So if you showed up today with, you know, unless you're showing like some materials that can't be done digitally, like a side, a piece of siding or something, that everything else should be submitted, so the public has the same goal to see those materials that were submitted at the board when they're making that decision. So everything will go directly from the agenda. If you have a presentation, I know at least one of you sent that presentation to us. From here and showing it, people will see it on Zoom, they'll see it here. And you can also look on that screen over there.
Thank you. So we will start off with a continuing VAR review. This is for 31th Avenue, VAR 03-2021. So you have the...
Yes, I'm the all work itself. Do I just sit here or do you want me to...
We need her to talk to him, Mike.
Over.
Any chance?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you. Turn it off on the line. Is that good?
Perfect.
Let's see. The issues we still have undecided, I think, were the depth of the porch roof and whether it's the drawings are accurate or acceptable on the porch, the front elevation.
Would you like me to help?
I can put...
I mean, would you like me to help take through this?
Yes, would you like to take us through it?
Yeah.
Everything might be just kind of out of plan.
So in the last one's meeting, this got pretty close to be done. There was an update that was sent to us. That update reflected the change here on the front, but it didn't get the siding. It didn't have the depth additional on it. The original tool will have something that looked a little bit different. So we now have side views of how long that's going to be. See, it... You can see here it has sort of depth profile, how it looks inside, similar shingle stuff. And it has...
I think it was actually dimensioned on one of those.
Yeah, right here, it's two, the A is without, it's not now. And so that's pretty much it. The other change that they made, which they could go over at the last meeting, is that this window, which previously had a couple of smaller windows, it's been replaced by this large, that big window in the front. The other changes are stuff that was part of the previous application.
I'm interested, there was a material change here as well?
Yeah, so maybe take some pictures of the materials. Those new materials are right here. Did you bring copies of those materials with you today?
No, I didn't bring them. It's hardy siding with their stock colors. The pearl gray is the siding and the iron gray will be around the windows. And the pearl gray will be also on the house trim as well. So just the, just the trim around the windows will be the iron gray.
Board members, any comments or questions?
I'm just trying to understand the overhang with them, that side is, that shingle, that shingle. And then it's got the...
The plan view actually shows it maybe clearly too, on A110.
A110?
Yeah, it's right above the top of your screen, it shows that projection there. Where?
Okay.
Right now, the side, that side porch roof wraps around to the front. Do you raise it just a little bit higher?
You guys can show what it was.
And we didn't really notice initially, but the door is not centered under the roof. Kind of cobbled together on the side of the house as it is now.
So this is...
Oh, I see.
Very cobbled together. That's a long enclosed porch that faces west.
That's the existing roof, yes. And you're going to move the roof as opposed to the door. So it would still have that same profile in terms of the shingles, but then you're also putting the white, replacing that, replacing that roof overhang. This is working intermittently or... Replacing that front overhang with one that's a little more proportional to the house and the door.
Don't worry, the board's, board's...
So that's, that was what was previously, that's there now, right?
That's currently the profile, yeah.
Kind of get that little camera roll. Okay, I mean, it's pretty straightforward now, as far as, do you guys have any other comments here on this one? As far as public hearing at this point?
No.
We have an open to public hearing, right? So I think, yeah.
I wanted to mention, so there's one other piece of this, and that, she's bringing up already. Originally, when this went through, she was not going to make any changes to the siding.
Right.
She's just gonna sort of replace it with, you know, with similar siding. She's now decided to completely change the siding, brand new siding. It's not great, actually.
Oh, very much. It's vinyl, white vinyl siding now.
I know this house very well, two houses down, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay, this is, this is good. So I think at this point, I would like to give a motion to open the public hearing.
Michael Aaronson, motion to open public hearings.
Hi, no, Aaron's second.
Any objections? Objections, motion passes, unanimous consent, we're now in public hearing. Is there anybody here from the public who would like to speak to this application? What's, twice? Okay, it appears that nobody is here to speak. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Every time we don't have a motion to close the public hearing.
And any objections? No objections, motion passes, unanimous consent. The public hearing is now closed on this. We have a motion to, I think, approve the application with the, with the materials that were presented by photographs and the elevations that were shown today.
Nina Aaron, motion to approve the materials as presented today. And then designer, Michael Aaronson, second motion.
Great, thanks, we'll do a rule call here.
You can just do...
Oh, right, oh, right, we're in person. All in favor? Motion passes four zero.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, so we're gonna keep moving on here. The next item on the agenda is planning board 06-06-2021 and VAR 05-2021. This is 14 Water Street. And we will welcome up those speaking to this project.
Hi, nice to see you in person.
That's as good as any. Right? Right.
I think this is actually, yes. So, you know, we've been, maybe go back to half a slide. So we are listening slide. There we go. This is similar to what we spoke to you guys when it's, before this was official, free application. We have heard the concerns of this board, of the zoning board, of the community. And we have re-proposed a plan that's much smaller and more architectural to the area. So we've heard concerns about the number of units, the number of parking spaces, the height of the building in the neighborhood, proximity to the neighboring properties and architectural contextualization. And as you saw last time, and we're here to expand on that, we have re-schemed to address each one of these concerns. Excellent, please. We're still interested in doing the mixed-use waterfront development. This is what is asked for in the SPM district. And we are still looking at two-bedroom apartments, some commercial garage studios, creating holistic community in, at this property. Next slide. This is, you know, what the comprehensive plan that was excitingly just approved last week, we think that we are helping to address this issue. Next slide. In fact, you could skip this slide and the next slide, just go to this, which is comparing on the left, what the zoning, no one can actually read that.
You can zoom in, you can increase the size there.
The, you know, what the zoning asks for, mixed use, oh, perfect. The revised proposal, we are at two stories above Great Plain or at 69% block coverage. We have offset the setbacks from our neighbor's property, three feet on each side. We're still set east 10 feet off of the east side. We now only have three units, so we're not in the realm of affordable housing requirements. And this reduces the parking demand from 20 spaces to eight spaces. So we think significant improvement on, on all of those issues. Go to the next slide. So to talk about the parking, I should say parking waiver, no longer parking variance. You know, we, we started with nine units requiring 13.5 spaces. We're now at three units requiring 4.5 spaces. The commercial, we were at 2,300 square feet, required 5.75 spaces. We're now at 1,000 square feet, requiring 2.6. So we've reduced by 12 spaces. And of that, really five are looking for overnight parking. And we know that 5-9 Water Street has asked for a very, has been granted a very similar parking waiver. And we feel that we're almost identically in the same position as they are. Next slide. So the scheme on the left was the old proposal, the scheme on the right, clearly within all the bounds of zoning compliance. Next slide. So currently, it is a vacant lot. Next slide. This is what was proposed. It scared the shit out of everybody, I can't say that probably. But that's what happened. You can see that we're right up against the neighboring property lines. And we, we understand the concern and we're, we are listening. So if you go to the next slide. So this is a, two stories above the Great Plain. The Great Plain is, as we talked about before in meetings, it's through our site. So that is a basement on the ground floor, is offset from my neighbor's car now. Three feet on that side and three feet on the other side as well. Next slide. Here's a view of it looking from the intersection towards that same property. Next slide, please. This is a section of how we are proposing to do mixed use on this. The ground floor, the basement, I should say, is these commercial garage studios. There are some commercial garage studios on the second floor at the east of the building. And then there are three two-bedroom units on top of that. Next slide. Floor plans, you can see here that we have a residential entry in the basement that leads up to its own staircase at the north of the page here, and a storefront at the front. And some of these small commercial studio spaces in, in the back where it is below gray and dark. Next slide. This is the second floor plan, this is the split, or I should say the first floor plan. This is the split floor between a residential two-bedroom unit in the front and commercial studios in the back. Next slide. This is the final floor plan with two, two-bedroom units on it. They're exact mirrors of each other, in case anybody cares. And they have Juliet balconies that open and they're about 1,100 gross square feet. We might meet both the habitable square footage and the livable square footage requirements. We've worked with Joe and Hamed to confirm that. So we are really like how these units lay out. And that unit layout, if you go to the next slide. So helps drive how we're thinking about shaping this massing. So how did we end up with the massing that we did architecturally? I'll explain a little bit here. We, we want to try and break down the massing of this very long, low building with smaller discrete parts to help make it feel even smaller. And so if you go to the next slide. We broke it up into three sections to, again, to create that smaller read and not kind of the monotony of one really long wall against either side of this. Next slide. That's what it looks like from, from both perspectives. Next slide. So that's derived from the living spaces in both lifting up and the circulation bedroom, bathrooms and bedrooms in the middle being depressed down. And it creates that articulation between them and delineates for the occupants and for also the people on the outside, the program, programmatic function of those spaces. Next slide. Lifting those sections up also creates much more sunlight. It creates dramatic high ceilings. These are facing south, so it's a great opportunity to daylight these spaces even more and reduce energy demand. Next slide. So we are proposing three primary materials here. There is cement board lap siding, standing seam metal cladding and stucco at the base. Go to the next slide. So here's a precedent of the material that we are proposing on the, this is cement board lap siding, hardy board. You guys have seen it a lot. It's a, this is a variation of gray on it and a contemporary look while still very traditional with the lap siding approach. Next slide, please. So there's the actual material of the hardy, the hardy plank lap siding. It has a wood texture to it. And that's what it looks like. I'm sure you guys have seen this on many projects. Next slide, please. So what is standing seam metal look like at both a roof and a wall cladding material? These are a number of examples, both on multifamily and on single-family commercial buildings, about standing seam metal being used as a wall cladding material. And some examples of it, you know, making that bend and turning between roof and wall. Next slide, please. We are looking at using MBCI's batting line system with a charcoal gray panel to, there are flat panels in between, 12 inches on center of the ribs. Next slide, please. And that, I believe, is the conclusion of where this long road has taken us since February in a much bigger project to what, what we've really listened to, to everybody here and tried to propose something that is small, yet has enough units to make it economically viable, enough commercial space to make it economically viable. And I think a really exciting use for a vacant lot in this, in this neighborhood.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna turn it over to... I mean, any questions or...
You can keep going, yeah.
Ron Steinberg. Just actually recording. I've never been accused of being self-spoken before.
We can try.
No, it's okay, we can depend on it. I'll be very...
It's down, goes back in the bag and it is recorded back there. So let's, okay.
I just...
It is definitely recorded right here.
So, thank you all, I'll be very grateful. Just with the upcoming August break and it, you know, fall certainly rolling very quickly behind that. If there is anything that is needed by the board, any further renderings or information, massing, whatever it may be, if there's any way for that to be communicated to us before that meeting, so we can answer any questions you may have, that would be so greatly appreciated by us in terms of expediting the project as best we can to, to avoid. And though, and if there are any questions, any concerns that you've identified thus far, please do share with us now and we will get that to you as quickly as possible. All right, I mean, first I just want to thank you guys. I think I appreciate the kind of gravity of changing from what was originally proposed to this. It's a big deal. And, you know, I feel there's certainly a couple of different ways of looking at that. But I think that we've come to is something, you know, which I can see, you know, sitting on that site. So I think that's, you know, positive from that perspective. So, I mean, I, you know, I have some specific questions, I think, you know. I mean, I think looking at this just like from a, from a VAR perspective and, you know, your description of the massing, I think, was really helpful. Are you like some, like silly pragmatic questions? I don't think, is there like a Yankee or a internal drainage system, gutter system here? How are we draining this thing that's starting like really big, really?
Sure. I, I think that in this scheme, those would have an internal drain system that would adjust at the bridge line. In fact, I think you go back to the precedents. I think one of those has a, if you go down a little bit. Oh, I'm sorry. If you go down. No, those, actually, those do not.
That was almost like, like, like...
Well, we got the questions you're talking about, the standing seam going.
There's, there are a number of these precedents that I evidently did not select the one that has an internal gutter, but that has a gutter line at that edge that allows it to, that will have an internal gutter system. The other piece of that to point out is that we are three feet off our property line. So should we come down and we'll be landing on our property?
Can go back to the, just to one of, one of the renders. It's a bit short of the street, decide to, I think this is something that was, just when I, when I first saw the drawings, one of my thoughts, just to the right, one of the renderings of this project. Next, next slide. Next slide. That works. It's just looking at, you know, I think, interestingly, I feel like the, the secondary elevations are maybe more developed than the, than the street facade in a certain way. It just seemed a little bit kind of plainer with the, with the hardy board going across the punch windows. And it, and it's funny because, you know, while you made this project a lot shorter, it's still actually, you know, when you look at the renderings inside, it's still, you know, kind of has a stature and a height to it. That almost kind of want to show off a little bit more. And I realize that the, you know, you're kind of expressing the program on the inside with the massing. But I'd almost want something going up the middle as well, combining, combining that down. I don't know if other people here agree with me, but that was something that stuck out to me just kind of.
Sure, I, what, what we are trying to do, and it's a little hard to, to see in, you know, rendering form, but there's a, an L of the, a setback. Yeah, if you zoom in there, there's a step between the stucco plant to get it to read like a plant and the box that's sitting above it. So that's one piece to point out to break that up. The other is, I think, the rendering is not doing justice to the operability of the front facade with those Juliet balcones. And that helps it make it more diameter itself. And so I think that that will also give life to that, to that front elevation. And the final thing is, if you zoom out a little bit further, the read is to try and articulate that L around on, on the top and the left there as framing this box that's sitting on the plant. And so getting that volume to read rather than dividing it vertically is the intention. So to have a book like three volumes there and that are of a scale that's appropriate. That's the intention.
Other comments, guys?
Yeah, so with the runoff, are you saying that you've got now the three feet to the property line? And any water that is coming off the building will be landing on the property. So what, is that gonna be permeable? What are you planning for around the building for 20 years?
Sure, so on the, if you go back to the ground floor plans. Yep, right there. So on the north side of the page, the north side of the project, well, there is our trash room opens out onto a path of a sidewalk there that would be on our property. And beyond that, we would be into the earth. And so our intention there is that we will have a, you know, that will be landscape so that it, you know, any water that is coming off of it is contained onto our site.
And it's, it's a big roof, so there's, there's a lot of...
Well, it will have the gutter system, right? So the, the gutters will tie into the stormer. The gutters don't just spill onto the property, the gutter spill into the, that's part of the sweat and what we need to, so the gutters tie into the storm drain. So 95% of the water that is coming off of this is contained into a water management system.
I think it would just be good to see how that's going to be expressed on the side. Because if it's, I mean, if it's all internal, that, that's fine. I just don't see how that's working in here. And I just, you know, so we don't have any surprises or changes down the road. Okay, I think looking at the roof scape as well, any other utilities or, I mean, you know, gas in or, or venting stacks, you know, that are gonna impact the roofs, you know, the roof liner or...
There are, of course, will be vent stacks.
Yeah, or flues, I mean, I don't, you're not burning gas.
There's no chimney, yeah, there's no gas allowed. So there, of course, will be...
Condenser units, you know, air conditioning, like how is, how is all of that being managed and fit in with the exterior of the facade?
Sure, there, we, we actually have a system, a tight system that does not require an exterior condenser in it. What we would...
Or a louver or something, I mean, is this like a...
There will be tires, so of course, there will be some louvers on the facade where exhaust vents are.
Sort of the follow-up, I'm looking at this colored sessions memo and I'm wondering about the...
Can I interject this really quickly? Because John, I spoke to John this afternoon. I'm sorry, there you are, very nice to meet you. It was previous, we mistakenly reviewed an older set of plans, so...
Well, actually, I mean, my question has to do sort of following up on the drainage, the overall landscaping, you know, green scape, tree trees, whatever. And that would be helpful to see on the renderings, just to sort of see how that's one, if, if there are. I'm assuming there are plans, I mean, the colored session menu and memo talks about the tree trees. But I'm assuming if that's based on the older plans, that that's no longer a recommendation.
Well, our memo was, was actually based on a, I think, part, a part of your submission. It didn't include the, the site plans and the specific aspects. Whatever reason, I don't know. So it was an update of the previous memo. So there was very little change to that memo.
So the one dated July 23rd is the most recent one?
It was... It was, it was the most recent submission we had in our files, which was dated June 28th, but it did not include the civil package, which I received from Eric today by email. It's a very detailed package, I had time to look through it today, and I can say that the package addresses all our issues with the.
And that was, if there was a mix-up, but that was submitted on, I believe, on June 20th, as part of the last Z K submission. File.
There's some details we'll, we'll need to discuss with the DPW and the applicants, but I can say going through the plans today that all, all comments were addressed in the package.
Can I ask, John, if your comment about county health department, does it have, do they need county health department?
County health department isn't required unless 2,500, I believe it's 2,500 gallons per day is discharged from the facility. Calculations were provided to us, but those calculations only addressed the residential didn't address the commercial. However, the commercial component is probably only about an additional 105 gallons, but I believe you'll, you'll need to update that portion of the submittal, but I, it still does not exceed the 2,500 gallons. So I don't, I don't believe that health department approval is required.
Any, whether any comments, again, regarding site lighting, I know we're in a residential district there, where you've talked about this, the sidewalk, this pathway, as people I'm assuming would be using, you know, late at night, just kind of making sure that any, you know, lighting fixtures that are being put around this building, which is, you know, which has a different use than, than what is currently around, it is, is being sensitive to neighbors.
Certainly, we have not addressed that, we can address that, I would certainly want very low light on those that one side to get to the trash room. You know, lighting the pathway and nothing more to disturb anybody.
And trash removal, that will be.
Trash removal will be handled, it will be taken to treat and handled by us with a reliable management company.
I guess just following up on that in terms of neighbors and things. The, I know that you said earlier the commercial, in a previous presentation, commercial studios, you do not see those, I mean, they're fairly small, they're not going to be industrial.
They cannot be, for.
Right, so I just, I wanna, have you reiterate, I guess you've got now commercial studios that are on the same level as a residential unit, there will be residential units above, and obviously there's neighbors on either side, so just in terms of noise and hours of operation.
Yeah, this is, uh, white industrial is not allowed in this, in, in the use, so this is office type of environment. We, we do expect these to be available to those tenants 24/7, so that they can work on their accounting or work on their peating at whatever hour they wish. But we, you know, the, you can't turn this into a music studio. And you can't, you know, turn this into a woodshop. And that's, that's not, that's not on my requirement sets, on what's it's done for.
Are there any other more comments at the moment? Um, I, I think I just wanted, so, just to kind of reiterate, kind of really what's before us, and just define this as, as we kind of report on this, but we are looking at, you know, a site plan approval, so, I mean, we have, we've actually been talking a lot about site plan, we haven't really looked at it together here. The conditional use, again, we've just started talking about that as well, the R, we spent some time on parking waiver, which I think we dealt with over the previous two meetings on a different project. So, th- those, those are kind of what's up, and I, and I guess we actually, today, I think the one decision that we need to really make is, we previously passed this project to the zoning board, recommended that they become the agency for SECPRO, because it was a zoning project, which it is no longer. So, you know, today, and, and Amanda Heine corrected if I'm wrong, we can need to look at, it would be, it would be a hard opportunity to declare ourselves as the new agency.
So, the zoning board, do you wanna? It's only board after our last meeting. Yeah, because at the last meeting, the board meeting, the, we're gonna work out the resolution and the applications came up and basically said, you know, it's not appropriate for us to serve the agency on this subject anymore, because there are no longer any variances applied. So yes, I think it would be appropriate for your board to have a motion to declare itself very intent to be the agency and well circulated, known as intent to be lead agency, so that by the time the applicant comes back in September, that will be handled and the notice will have circulated. And at that point, I think everything will be buttoned up in that regard.
Okay.
There's, there's one other element that we did not talk about, the pre-meeting, which was it makes me refer back to the E A C. This part has changed significantly since the last time we did this, so they need to do a fresh.
Did they send us a letter, or I thought we had gotten a letter?
I believe they did send a letter, actually, I don't know. Yeah, so, but they, they, they need to.
Okay.
That would take place beginning September prior to May.
And procedurally, so, so those would be two action items for tonight, do we go to a public hearing, do we have to go to a public hearing to make those declarations?
You don't have to open a public hearing in order to declare you're an active lead agency, but that you want to open a public hearing tonight, you're more than welcome to, that's then just adjourn it.
Okay. Um, I think, it, given the conversations that we've had, I think it would make sense to, to open up a public hearing on this, to see if anyone here, the legislature for the project, is there a motion?
All right, tell me, I make the motion to open a public hearing?
Michael Aaronson, second.
Any objections? No objections, motion passes, we're now in public hearing. Is there anybody here from the public that wanted to speak to this project? Right, so I just asked that when you come up, take the microphone, just announce your name clearly, so we all know who you are, name and address. And as you come on up.
Hi, good afternoon, good afternoon. Can you hear you? My name is James Minnet, I live next door to this empty lot. Have you guys came down to Water Street and take a look at this area, the street will look like? Have you guys noticed the spree out there? Did you notice the street?
These are the boards.
I'm sorry, oh, this is the board, you know that.
We're just standing up right here.
Do you see the streets?
Yeah.
Yes. You know that street's been like that the last 37 years, that's how long it's been down there? You guys have not even looked at Water Street, ever. Now somebody comes up on a project and now everybody's all a bit concerned about what Gang Water Street. What he's proposing is pretty different from anything that's down there. A, 24/7 access to offices and stuff, the people that get work. There's no parking on Water Street. You guys want to give waivers for parking? You're talking about four or five units? You may be talking about up to eight quarters, maybe 10 quarters, I don't know where they're gonna park that. Fortunately for me, we have two cars and I have a driveway. You guys are giving waivers out for parking that, you know, where they keep, where they keep from parking. You're gonna have businesses running 24/7 in a neighborhood that's pretty much totally residential. Except for two, three spots that close at night. You think that's good for the people that live down there? I'm asking you, please.
We were, we're here to listen to, to your concerns and, and also to, yeah, for sure.
Uh, you guys need to come down there and take a look at this project and, you know, and the way it looks against what's down there, or rich, the house is down there all over 100 years old, I mean, it's a neighborhood. Everybody on the street knows each other. We don't have any problems with anything. You're gonna bring in commercial on that little city street that has bus, that's a bus route? They'll never have anybody parking there that's on load. Because you can't unload anything there, you know, without park. If you can't park, you can't unload, you gotta double park, you, you, there's a bus route that comes through here, you know that?
I actually know this, I know this street, I drive down there, and I, I'm down at the train every, every day.
So I'm gonna handle my, my, please, thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Good evening, my client's, my name is. From the owner of 16 Water Street, which is the property. I have pretty much the same, you know, same concern as this, that it just, you know, it's just there. You know, the, the main thing that bothers me is, like you said, this is, we're just talking now, I'm not, you know, I'm not one that's totally against development, as long as it's in the right place and in the right space. Now, all of the, all the mixed-use buildings surround our block, we got either, you have either Main Street or, or, you know, further down Water Street, but, and, you know, all these, all these places have parking lots, they got parking. This, you know, to me, I mean, for parking waiver first of all, is, you know, is just adding to the problem, you know, there's no solution that, that sounds so to you, a waiver, it's just adding to the problems that we have. I think also the, the 24-hour usage, that's, you know, this, that block, I'm just, I'm just talking about the block of Water Street, the one-way street between 8 and 18, Water Street, that's all residential, that's all private, wanted to have me houses there, there's no commercial in that state of the block, everything surrounds that. So, you know, like, I feel the same way, like, to have 24-hour anything going on, that's just very inconsiderate to the neighbors, that we have kids that go to school, we have all, you know, we have rest too, so having to have anything going on 24 hours, hey, that's not, that, first of all, that's not how, that's not how the neighborhood runs, that's how not, that's not how it operates. People, we all know each other, we all respect each other, we know the businesses around, we, and, and, you know, all the businesses there, we know them, and they close at least an hour. So, you know, and there's no problems here, you have, you have something that's going on 24 hours, you know, people will be calling, police complaining about noise, that's a problem, that's another problem that we don't have down there. So, you know, it's, it's just things to think about. Also, you know, the, to me, the building looks like it's three stories, not, not two. And, so, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it, and you're talking about sunlight coming inside, but without my sight, I lose everything. You can't, you're from, you, you look from south to north of that building there, you can't see my building, I look at mine out of my window, you know, in the morning, through my kitchen, I can see my basers, I can see the trains, I can see everything, now I have a big box going, big box going, that to me is a little out of element for a particular block. And that, like I said, I'm not talking about the whole area, I understand the area is, you know, mixed-use, but it's, that's, that surrounds that little, that one little block that it had, the sewing was changed, so that has to be included, you know, but, you know, I'm not saying necessarily the wrong place, I'm saying the wrong space. That's, that's, you know, it's just a lot of concerns with the cleanup, the building, I definitely do that, I, I know for a fact, I've been, I've, I've, I've been raised, I've been in the area, never left the area. I was born and raised in 18 Water Street, I live at 16 now, I left at 19, I moved to Market Street, so this holds on here, I've been in the area for 63 years. And, you know, it's, so I've been in the areas, I know the area pretty good, but this, this, this lot had a two-family house. It's, you know, the cleanup, this, this, pre-bury run of property, I know for a fact there's an oil tank in the ground, one front. This stuff has to be cleaned, you know, this is a different scenario, it's not like the, like a DPW place, I understand that, that, that's a, that's an area that, you know, it's, it's abandoned, it needs to be cleaned up and to, you know, to develop, I can see that, I can understand that. But, you know, but some, this is, this is an active neighbor, this is where, you do have people here, still living here, it's kids, it's, it's activity constantly. So, you know, I just had to think of someone, you know, where, where would we build it? Where are you gonna keep equipment? You know, you have to clean up, even the closest to, even though it's, you know, the project has been, you know, sunk down to a point, but still, three feet from the property, I can't see it being done without compromising our property somehow, with my garage, driveway, and I have another structure on my property, to write on the property. It's, you know, a lot of things are questionable, a lot of things I think should be, that a little closer, you know, it, it concerns me, it really does.
I appreciate that, and, and, you know, and that's why we're, you're here to, to speak to your concerns, and I, I appreciate your sharing.
Appreciate the time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak here? I just wanted, I just, I do want to reiterate, the reason we have these public hearings is where you have the opportunity to share these thoughts, and do take these thoughts into consideration as we move forward and speak with the applicant and move the project forward. Would you like to speak at all?
Yes.
Just say, good, announce your name and address.
My name is, I'm, I'm, eighteen, most. My concern is very, very simple, where, yeah, people who are. That's my major concern, where they got apartments? So the venue, but I, I can't remember exactly how many apartments there are, three apartments? So we're gonna assume that every family has two cars, who live in a apartment? Everyone's sitting here, I'm sure you don't live, you live, you have a driveway or garage, there's no parking.
Can I make one more comment? You cannot live in that area without a car. You can go to the train, you can't go shopping unless you have a car, you cannot leave that area without a car.
I, I.
And that's everybody did.
And I, I appreciate those comments, I appreciate the comments on parking especially, I know that this is, you know, it's an important question to folks. So, and, and thank you all, and that certainly helps us as we move forward at this review process. Um, do we have any other comments before we kind of move forward, or we're, we're kind of getting a little bit late here? All right, so at, at this point, we're gonna keep the public meeting open, we would like, I'd like to adjourn it, it would make sense if we have a big motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Naya Aaron, motion to adjourn public hearing. Michael Aaronson, second.
Objections? No objections, motion passes, as we can. Set. So, thank you, I think, before we move on from this project, I do think we should make the two motions that we discussed a moment ago, regarding first, the SECPRO lead agency declaration, so we have a motion to lead agency.
Eric Tomlin, I'll make a motion to, for the planning board to be media agency on 14 Water Street. Make the motion to declare intent. Make the motion to declare intent to be lead agency in secret process of 14 Water Street.
Naya Aaron, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Motion passes 4-0. And we have a motion to refer this project to the E A C.
Michael Aaronson, motion to refer the project to the E A C.
For L W R P review.
For L W R P review.
I'm just being.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Was that a second, sorry?
Eric Tomlin, second motion.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Motion passes 4-0, thank you guys very much.
Thank you all.
Yep. Okay. Okay, we're gonna keep moving forward here, we do have a couple of adjournments here. So, we have 76 Broadway as adjourned, and 80 Broadway. Are both, those are kind of together adjourned. So, and I think the next one, I need on the agenda is also adjourned, this 175 North Island, I think also, maybe not, okay. And then, the, the, that actually, I think that, I believe is also adjourned for, which is, that is the other Water Street project. So, these, so we are now, that kind of concludes the continuing business, brings us to part two of the agenda, which is new business for the board. So, I would like to call BAR 09-2021, this is 15 Susquehanna Road, this is a BAR application, and we're looking for a proposed addition tonight. So, we have someone to speak, present this project, if this is what happens. Just if you're coming up to present, it's also same thing, name and announce yourself, so we, we're coming to, I appreciate it.
Could you speak up a little bit if I was a?
Sorry, my name is, I'm, but that's just created and I'm representing, and it's a, the addition is to review your deck house. So, this is, because right now, what's it going to remove the deck at the rear, as well as the patio and replace it with a one-story addition that would continue sharing the dining room? And a stone patio, the same footprint as the existing white patio. All the finishes on the, on the addition match the existing. I apologize, I wasn't able to get a sample, so that was pretty much what we.
We do have.
No, that's, that's just the existing, we, we found a material very similar to the existing house with fiberglass in it. And we weren't able to get a sample, however, because most places that provide, you know, other samples, but we do wanna look at it, it's there somewhere.
Is that, is that a material cut sheet that you have, or?
Well, not a cut sheet, it's just a picture of the material from your site.
That's helpful, yeah, you could maybe pass that down to the board.
And, and there's, it's, it's. The additions approximately 200 square feet. And, as I said before, the stone patio is just the things that kind of the existing.
Can we go back to the elevations maybe?
The phone's in relation to what we?
The proposed, the proposed. The windows there are gonna, yeah, match the, I'm assuming those are vinyl windows that are there on the existing?
Yes.
She's a, okay. Same color, same, and the, and the roofing material, I think you spoke of speed on the sample, that'll match the. The drawings, it looks like, is there, is that a rubblestone foundation that you have in there too? And the drawings, I, I wasn't sure, I saw the, the exposed foundation on the existing buildings, is that rubblestone, or is that?
No, that was plastered.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Does the size of the addition was the same as the current patio that's there?
It's about the same, it's actually a little bit shorter and smaller, there's currently some permanent crack on it, perhaps when you wanted to.
Is there a neighbor to the, the faces that this, this side of the property? I, I couldn't, I went up, but I really couldn't tell when I go around if there was a house that.
There is, but the tree drops significantly.
Okay, so they are elevated above this site, so it wouldn't really be approaching on any sightlines or property.
Didn't look from what I could see that there are any trees that need to be removed, but can you just confirm that? No, there's no tree, and nothing too close that would become, systems. There's one small tree, there's there, but, yeah, there's only one small tree in the back of me, so you have to be careful. But, no, there's, you know. So, it's small, maybe, what, it's more like a bush.
Okay, I know this is covered, but you're, you're within your, your zoning setbacks, and this is all passive, right? And any other, any other questions?
And just could we see the proposed addition drawing again?
Yeah. Just, you know, the always question drainage, so you're adding some roof, I know that before you have debt there, but how are you gonna manage the additional roof? We have the regulations.
So, I, I would just keep in mind, this is a BAR, so while, that's a great question, as it pertains to the design of the gutter system, you know, maybe you can focus on that after the question. Of course, it's not a sightline question.
All right.
I mean, we just look at the, I know there's the one other, the elevation base, that you mean, that, that's a, a blank wall, there's, that's not penetrated, it's just the, the windows and the doors on the, on the two sides of the addition, oh, there is, okay, there is that one, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it's large, that, that, is that, that's, is that window visible at all from the public right of way?
So, there's, I think it's the one neighbor toward that side, three houses.
It is, make this great view. Yeah. This is something we could do before we did this object.
Were you guys have been before?
I suppose we could have, but no, we didn't. That's, as you're deciding, you're looking at the other approach. Apparently not, but possibly if that area was cleared out.
Well, they can't, some of these streets are, maybe not on the property, they're large, they can't, clear them, not without a tree from it.
Yeah, I know, I'm looking more at just the low lying vegetation there, the shrubs. Let's go back to that, that elevation. Just wanna make sure, yeah, I mean, that, I, I guess, it, it just strikes me as a very large window, or the other windows are very small, and just the proximity to the, to the roof line there. It just, it seems a little out of balance. May it just be my thought, I don't know. It's almost like it's, it isn't, I, you should probably, looking at that, just look at that opposite elevation, which is the, the, really just the, this staircase of the, that, right? And then, that looks really nice, and it's still, and actually, if you look the, look at the door head, right, it's actually lower than the windows next to it. And you actually see the, you can see the, the data line for the second floor, and when you go to the window on the other side, I guess it's, I'm not sure if it's a window or a, or like a clear story, right? It's kind of like, it's like either. I know there is another house straight up at this, you know, from that street view, it looks that, it looks that way, and, and in the winter, this may even be visible from the street. I'm just wondering if that doesn't wanna be just a little, a little tighter, a little smaller, and, and, or a clear story at the window. I mean, not, not for, just in terms of framing wise, I, you know, I.
Could you, could you remind what, how you plan on using this space?
It's a dining room.
A dining room.
So, have you given any consideration if light is really important about the skylight as opposed to a window system? It might give another opportunity for light, that's all.
I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to a window there, I just, I do feel like it maybe needs to be dropped down a little bit from the roof line and, and, I mean, the width maybe is okay, but something just a little less large.
Or, or two, your two elements, you know, have, have a, you know, window and a clear story. You know, I wouldn't even be opposed if it was like a faux door that went all the way, you know, I don't know if that's, it's a program, but just, and then again, I don't wanna over, I don't wanna say, you know, I wanna overdo this, this conversation here, but there is something that, 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 when I saw this elevation. Maybe stop for a second. So, I mean, do we feel like we wanna ask them to go back and just modify this, this window, if we can make it either smaller, divide it into two, but to address the, the scale a bit in relation to the rest of the house? Either by breaking it up or creating it, kind of creating more horizontal windows, every more at scale with that aside?
Comment?
Yeah, suggestion. Okay. And I would, would like to open a public hearing on this before we move on to adjourn, given where we are, but we have a motion to open this subject public, see if anybody else is here to speak to it.
Michael Aaronson, motion to open up for a public hearing.
Eric Tomlin, second motion to open up.
The objections, no objections, the motion passes, we have anybody here from the public to, to speak on this?
Yeah, the homeowner.
Just to say, like, as always, ask your name.
Hi.
In your head.
Cecilia, please, yeah. And I just wanna address the questions that came up about the window. Um, I think she's done a beautiful job kind of laying out our vision and what the house looks like currently. We're gonna lose amazing sunlight at the end of the day, because we won't have that deck anymore. And I didn't wanna say goodbye to that, that's why it's a slightly oversized window for the dining room, and that's gonna be a window bench underneath, which is why it's appearing elevated, and we're gonna have built-ins on either side. So, that was kind of important to me. Are there any other questions?
I think that was really the one comment that we had.
Does that answer?
It's helpful to hear that, yeah, for sure, but.
I mean, I mean, just a little tweaking, maybe, if it's possible to still honor, you know, and I certainly appreciate your wanting to let in as much light, and I also think that Nina's suggestion, maybe a slightly smaller window with a, I'm losing the word, thank you. Skylight might be something to consider to even bring in more light, but I, I.
For a wider bay, I mean, just something, just, I think it's the verticality and how close it comes to the roof line that.
Okay, I understand.
You could potentially even have more, it's, it's not even the area of glass, it may even have, you get more light in there. Just make it, just spin a little bit more with the, with what, everything else on the house.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else here from the public who wanted to speak there?
I am John Frye, principal with Nexus Green. Thank you, Casey, we all make our first public presentation as associate architects.
Does a great job, thank you.
So, several motions, I understand the overarching ideas related to the size of the window. I think comparison to the existing house on the, the portion of the existing house on the right, in terms of a pattern language, and whether this aligns with that pattern language, may be a little challenge, I'm not saying it's not. I think the driving notion is, is as the client share, right, drama in the room, this is a big move for them in terms of, this one, losing the deck and replacing it with the dining room. And while I think the refinements, as a diagram that we're all studying and reacting to here, probably have some merit. In reality, especially given the context of not being able to see this on the street, whether the, the trees would be there or out or not, tends to mitigate the refinements of the proportion of that window. So, I would suggest, while I understand the academic notions, that the, you know, the real-world notions may not drive or be that weighted to reduce this window 20 to 30%. If you're, if, if that, if my suggestions don't have any merit, I understand you have to make that decision. The other notion I would request is the mechanics of this, is there, is there a possibility, if you're, if you're inclined to suggest that the window should be smaller, and I, this is work, we respect those notions. Is there the mechanics to move this along, along contingent on recalibrating the proportion of the window? As opposed to holding the application of faith for another month while considering the proportion of the window?
I know, but that, that's a procedural question, but I don't think.
So, they, so here's, you got a couple options here, I, I think that, number one, you know, you have a decision to make, obviously, whatever you decide, you decide to put this off and won't put it on one month, or like, put it on two months, so they won't be able to come back there, so at least September. You know, that could affect some of their own internal timeline, that's how they wanna deal with things. Now, that being said, if there are elements of the plan that you think could be sort of tweaked marginally, that they would be willing to accept right now, then you could sort of conditionally accept it with the, with, you know, input that they're gonna have to change the plan on that margin later. So, if you were to say, hey, you like the bottom part, and we just don't really like the upper part, because we think it's too dissimilar or whatever, you could make that recommendation, you happen to have the applicant here, if they're willing to accept that, then you could vote on it tonight, and they would, you know, sort of, provide those revised plans, and then you can just sign on with that, so.
Yeah, and, and really, is this, is this design choice, is there something that, it doesn't rise to the level of affecting the desirability of the neighborhood, you know, suitability in the context of neighborhood? Is it, is it that serious for you guys, that you feel like it's a whole bit over? That's the kind of changes here that, that were contemplated?
Yeah, just to put it in context, sometimes people will, you know, you as a board have to make decisions, you know, you want people to provide the nicest possible thing, you can get, but, but your jo, your job is not really to make full, you know, scale decisions about every element of what is nice. Rather, it is to prevent somebody from doing something that is offensive to the neighborhood and to the overall general property value. Are you concerned that this window as designed is going to harm the neighborhood? If you're not concerned with that, then you should consider whether it makes sense to prevent them from getting approved tonight, or even trying to see if maybe there is a marginal change that they can make to be able to accept right now. Would also save us a lot of time, trying to come back and do this all.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I appreciate all of that, I think that's important for all of us here, for me to hear. So, I, I guess on that, I mean, right now, we're in public hearing right now, I think we've, we've heard your, your comments, I, I appreciate all of it, I actually think we could, you know, versus, you know, we can. First, you know, we can. Close the public hearing on this at this point. I think if you guys agree. You know, the motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, Eric Talmadge, I think motion to close the hearing.
Non-Aaron second.
And all in favor, say aye. Aye, the most of the, the motion passes for nothing. So the public hearing is closed. So I mean, having heard, having heard that, I do think that's important. I, you know, I. Have concerns about the visibility and what this window looks like, but I am certainly sensitive to the fact that. You know, the import of that change is, is not one that necessarily. I would want to kind of squash and slow down this project and give the rest of it.
The, the only thing I wonder is whether you could just, every other window has a straight across top. And I think what bothers me about it is you've got a peak on that window. Would you consider making it straight across on the top? Going to looking at options.
Very good suggestion. I don't want to hold this up.
No, I don't want to hold that please.
I just want to say that I thank you, Heidi, for that clarification because I think that it's really helpful sometimes just to be. Back to really looking at. And I, I think that one of the things is, you know, whenever people bring in. Applications for work from at home that it's like I, I, you don't want to be too prescriptive about what they. You know, choices that they miss because I think those are difficult choices and everybody has a right to make those choices. So obviously, if the criteria don't cross that threshold, it's. Or changing, you know. So I think that we should hold them up in minutes. So I, I think, given where we are, I think that is suggesting to me, I think, is one that makes sense if, if we can at least. If we're looking at, at passing a motion to, to approve this application, to do it with the condition. That the applicant will, will review the, the profile, the header of this window. And explore flattening it. To.
I would not say that they're going to review. That's too open ended. You really need to say they're going to flatten it.
Gotcha. Okay. Then that is what we will say. If that's, if that's amenable to the.
It is.
Okay. Then I'm comfortable with that position. We're there, then I, I think that we're, that we can move this one forward.
Motion to approve the application with the condition that the top of the window will be flattened to be straight across. Can I clarify which side of the house? The window on the west.
Michael Aronson second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for nothing. Thank you guys. Appreciate all that. Good presentation. Thank you. Alright, great. So. Move on. So back in here. So we have our next. Is another P A R. This is at Liberty Street. So this is a roof deck, an overhead application. So if the applicant wants to come forward. Or whoever's speaking up, have the applicant, then just introduce yourself and go through.
Hi, my name's Gary. I'm representing Inventor Architects and our client Jeremy Wood. The three Liberty Street. The proposed project is to install a roof deck at the attic level in the rear of the house. Just want to mention that we've already received HPC approval for this. To install officially, the house itself is not in the store account, but we have received HPC approval. Access to the deck is given by those three. Skylights that are being installed, one of which in the center opens up into a balcony and he'd be able to step out onto the other balcony. He's using this to view the Hudson River, which you can see from that balcony. In addition, he's installing a, a lower roof over the stairs. And he plans on finishing the interior portion of the attic, which he steps out onto the deck. Which will then trigger him to install sprinkler system periodically down through the egress of the building. The materials of the deck are an aluminum. Plank system. It looks just like wood to match the pattern of the house. The shingles on the wall roof will match the shingles on the existing roof. And the rain is an aluminum table art system. I believe the images of the. Go down, the images of the. What, yes, of what the deck looked like as well as the. Skylights and. They're. And that's.
Fair pictures of the house itself.
There should have been pictures submitted. They're now. Unfortunately, it's not on Google Maps.
I tried behind.
Yeah, so. Not quite made their way down there yet. It doesn't really have any neighbors. There's no one behind him. He has the woods and then his neighbor is Hudson River.
Which is the site before the building was constructed.
But that gives you sense of how far it is. And that's where his house is. Right. And so the next town.
Does the lot itself extend up this little at all or what are the? Yeah. It's right here. He does go up. And all of these, and all of these additions are on the, the west, on the west side facing the river. That's face facing the way. So this is, there actually is a, there's a vacant lot left of it.
Can you tell me?
That's, no, that's the. Blinking on the name, but.
Yes.
The high rise, yeah.
There's looking at lot thirty five there.
Yeah, so it's lot thirty five only by the same owner or?
No, thirty five is owned by the village. And folks, just so you know, lot thirty six, which is subject tonight. About two weeks ago was granted a certificate of appropriateness by the Historic Preservation Commission for the precise work that you guys are looking at tonight.
And I think traditionally, we, we've looked at, at their review as, as being. You know, as having import as, as we do ours. Alright, so I mean, I, you know, I've seen this. I, I think it's a, it's a deck addition. It's, you know, I think tastefully done, it's kind of unique in style, but. I, it makes sense to want to look out over the water.
There is an awning here that they're going to add. They've not defined materials. It's going to be the same shingles as.
Can we go to the? I thought I saw photo. It would be, it would be nice if we had the photos somewhere. I, I know that I saw photos of this house when I was looking at this earlier.
Yeah, I believe someone uploaded. Jenny, you call?
So if lot thirty five is owned by the village, does that mean it's just going to be held as open space in perpetuity or?
I'm sorry, you asking questions?
Asking Stuart, but.
I don't know, Stuart, is there any plans to dispose of the lot thirty five?
Heidi, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Are there any plans to dispose of lot thirty five?
Uh, as in, well. Let me answer it this way. The, there are, there were some discussions with the property owner. There were some issues previously because. The owner and just don't want to really go into too much, but there was some clear cutting of lot thirty five, which the village was not necessarily, you know, ecstatic about. But right now. It's, it's not on the radar, but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen. It also means that since the Villa Jones, that they can develop the lot.
But I don't know.
Photos of property.
Thanks, yeah. I, I don't have pictures.
Alright, I mean.
If you have a public.
That's acceptable.
I think it would be helpful for us if we're making a decision about this site just to see the photograph. It's that exposure on the side that you're.
Yes.
The railings will be different. You're doing. And it's not usual skyline. I don't think. And the material to Jaime's question a moment ago, we were looking at the, or his, his point that he made a moment ago. So we haven't seen any material submissions for that, that.
For the lower roof? Yeah, you're saying it's the same. It should be exactly the same.
Can you please make sure you submit those photos?
And if we just go, just go to the elevation one more time and then I do want to go into a public hearing. Actually, no, you see the. Yeah.
Yeah.
And just go to the bigger one. I was looking at the roof plan for a second. Thought, maybe we could see it more clearly there. Is that the only west elevation we have there?
Yeah.
Okay. Just zoom in on that.
You can only see it from the rear of the property.
Okay, alright, and then. So it's, so I guess just to clarify then, for the record, the, that second floor awning that you're installing, the roof will match the existing roof deciding. There is some siding component to it. If there's any fascia or, or covering it, all of that will be the same as all of the equivalent materials on the main design. I think that I, you know, it's time to go into a public hearing on this, just to see if there's anybody here from the public. We have a motion to go public hearing.
Michael Aronson motion to open a public hearing.
Nina Aaron second.
Objections, objections, motion passes, consent. Is there anybody here to speak to this project? Alright, there's nobody here to speak to this project, so close the public hearing.
Nina Aaron motion to close public hearing.
Eric Talmadge, I'm sorry. I second the motion.
It's easier this way than it was up doing. Alright, so any objections? No objections, the public hearing is closed. I think, you know, we, so given what I've seen, I think it makes sense at this point that we can. My, my, my vote would be to approve the project with the conditions of the, that second story awning in matching. Exactly what's there on the rest of the side in material. Obviously, the third story additions will be consistent with the, they've already submitted materials for that, so we'll leave that condition.
Okay, so moved, Michael Aronson, so moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes for nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, so we're up to item C. This is one hundred and twenty one Spring Street. This is a P A R application, a. Previous approval for vinyl siding, which has now been changed to stucco, so. Whoever's presenting, definitely come out, yeah, go ahead and introduce yourselves and let us know if.
Good evening, Ed Jimolo from Jimolo Associates for Architects. It was innocently, this is a change of group. What was done here is over a pretty long period of time, they purchased the building, probably five or six years. And pretty much renovated the bones of the building. Oil tank was rotted, the basement was swollen apart. It was very old. We never really figured out how old the building was. Structurally, we had to replace a good part of the building. And shape of it and everything is basically the way it was. Improved some stuff in the yards, driveway was a very steep driveway, black carpet just so we can get up in the property. The service is still there, water sewer. Bones of the house now are, you know, structurally sound. Trying to do in. A request by the owner, which is something she wanted to do is to change it to stucco. She has a house in Proton now, same type of house that we do in stucco. It's, it did probably a much tighter building with the layers of insulation that they put on than stucco. So the focus of this meeting is hopefully to see if we can make that change to stucco. Windows would be exactly the same as going to go what we had, what was there, only brand new windows. That's, that's my presentation. The owner is here. If she'd like to say a few words, I know she, she had death in the family. She had to go overseas. So she wasn't around a while and kind of on the project, so. We're here hopefully to try to finish it up before the next winter. Appreciate any comments.
Is there something showing the color of stucco or what?
We have, it's a. Color, we wanted to use a beige color. And get through the layers of. These are some photos of what was existing. I might have photos in the.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if they're in the, the submission.
I believe we sent the proposal to the.
Do we have the existing photos up there, Jaime?
Yeah.
The, the architecture of where they show this color is not what I would say. Best shot, which is.
And while you're, you're putting that together, I just, I did drive by. It looks like you are proposing a whole EFS system, right? So you're, you're trying to do a full, fully insulated envelope?
Yes, yeah. Way improve the energy code. To modern code for sure.
These are the same photos, yeah. I mean, there's also a photograph of the, of the stucco system. I don't know if that was submitted this time, stucco, if that was in the submission.
That was.
And the, the window surrounds, it looks like there's a detail. Is that a, is that a cast stone that you're trying to put around the perimeter of the windows?
It's a trim. That's the picture I was looking for. That's the color. You can't go by the design, this building is high rise. But that's the color. We're trying to, you know, match whatever the trim was on the building, everything.
But there was a window detail which seemed to show like, like a. But there was a window detail which seemed to show like, like a, a, from the drawing, there was a, there was a separate window detail for window elevation, which showed, I thought I maybe I misread it, but I thought I saw a, like a cast stone surround, which was nice.
Yeah, well, we went, whatever we showed, we tried to match and make sure that it's what we saw.
There, that, that, there. If you go in, you zoom in on that, there was a note regarding material there.
Yeah.
And concrete. So I don't, is that, I, I guess, so is that, is that a?
Well, we could match it more in the, in the flavor of the concrete, and you do a stucco, because we'll actually mold the pieces and then make, make a, you know, a, a design that would be after both, that would go with stucco, not gonna be stone, but it would be stuccoed over that interior.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I guess that was, okay, versus a cast stone surround, which is kind of how I interpreted that, was, you know, concrete.
We would be open to, at least, yeah.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand what you presented. And then as far as, I, I think that might, just kind of globally with, with, with stucco, you know, this is, you know, it's gonna be a big, you know, planer, stucco facade. That maybe aren't clear for the elevation, that might break that up. Are there any control joints or expansion joints on that facade that? Or, you know, horizontal, I don't know, like, my, my only concern with this. I appreciate your advice, because I, I was looking at this on the previous agenda before we had any elevation, so this is certainly really helpful. But just to, to break up that field of stucco.
If we done four lines, if you had something, you know, what if we were talking about, you know, pronounce that, so, you know, we'll open to your, your. But I think it would fit in, I mean, there's a lot of stucco buildings, the older buildings in, in Austin, we actually did a building for twenty-five years ago, like, down from Lucy's Pizza, which is still standing, whether or not, and all, one of the first stucco jobs in the area, but again, it's a contemporary look, but in some settings where it's commercial, this is not really commercial, you know, I think it would, it hold the value and look very nice as a, as a, you know, an older theme or textures.
Right now, there's, the vinyl siding is on the house, so that would be moved from the stucco.
Yeah, everything is, it's all been stripped.
Oh, it's already been stripped.
I, I drove by, but I saw, it looks like the installation is already been applied on the entire house in preparation for the plating and stuff. Okay, I mean, can we look at the street view real quick, just to see what these other houses, the context here, I think is really important.
Yeah. I'm, I'm concerned a little bit about the color and relationship to the adjacent.
That's.
That's your church.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's that, what's that yellow one right there? There you go.
Yeah, this is the house we saw and we liked the color.
Appears to be stucco.
Yeah, that's a, that's a rougher stucco. What, what kind of finish are you looking at doing on this?
Uh, just a trial, you know, uh, the way they would do it is, you know, like, certain, like, motion to get the, the particles to, you know, bump out a little bit, wouldn't be a smooth finish.
So this, this is, this is not a pre-bad stucco?
No, they, they do, they do it first, they, you know, plywood and all necessary structural elements, and then we go over to the, the den's glass, and then we're with the foam. It's insulation comes in blocks, and they shoot it in with an orange type tab that pulls the foam in, and then they start to apply the, the different layers of stucco.
I would say that this, what you're, what you gave us here, it looks like a smooth or like a line, like a stone finish.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Which, so, but what you're proposing, you're saying is different from this, it's, you're looking for a
Little texture.
More texture, it's not that, which I think probably is more fitting there.
So would, would the, the trim around the windows be a different color as in that house we saw further down the block, or?
It can be with stucco, we could, you know, depending on what the owner would like, probably look at and go over some samples, you know, could be white, it could be a darker color, but, you know, it would be something that would accent, you know, the window and function out of it. Basically, the material.
Because that's, that's, that is the, the kind of the before condition with the porch, we go to the, just wanna, you know, keep that in the tableau, but look at the elevation proposed. So the only, so, yeah, I, I, you know, the only horizontal kind of interruption now would be the, the little portico door.
Right, this has changed.
They had, they had a deck, the porch is gone.
Yeah, okay.
They had a deck which was, you couldn't even walk on it.
Right. And the, you know, and that's kind of, you know, the thing that, you know, the other, the precedent that we were looking at down the street, had the, had a front porch, and it was kind of divided up, it wasn't this big stucco wall. And have, you know, I, 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 I get why you want to do stucco here, and I, and I, you know, I think it makes sense, insulation wise, that, you know, something. Encouraging that, and, you know, I just would love to see how this is gonna be. Understand a little bit more how that, how that, how that big deal is just broken up, like the neighbor's house was, and then just kind of in terms of color and. You know, you guys' thoughts?
Uh, I'm in favor of the stucco, and I think on the front, you've got enough windows that it breaks it up. The side is, that's, that's more of an expensive stucco, but I don't have any insurance for it. I like that you're not doing a smoothie, you know, trying to smooth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess for me, I mean, I, I like the stucco idea, my preference would be for a different color, but if this is, you know, it's sort of what we were talking about earlier. If this is what the homeowner prefers.
The other part of it is up is very chromatic, but, you know, sun hitting it, this, this will be embellished, and it's just simple stucco.
Do you have any, do you have any samples for the, the fascia elements and the wood elements on the portico and the, the roof?
Yeah, we can present that. They, they can make the shapes right on.
No, I, yeah, no, I'm, I'm just looking at the, at the, at the fascia around the, you know, the peak of the roof, which you have kind of a, of all those sides, which is a pretty pronounced element, just in terms of are those, those are, are wood or, but materially.
It can be, it can be wood, you know, if the, the homeowner likes to work, it can be done.
I, I, I said, I'm asking, what is it, so we, you know, if we were gonna move on this, I'd want to know what it is and the color, so we could.
It's, it's for the purpose of providing guidance, the building department.
She, she's happy, just because she hits the stucco, regardless of what she has to do with the trim, we could achieve that, so it's not, you know, a totally different kind of trim. I mean, it could be, you know, you could use something which is a polished finish, they sell all this stuff now, and, uh, synthetic material, polished sheen.
No, I, I, I understand, I think my, you know, we're, we're looking at this as a, as an application, and whether or not we can approve it, and if, you know, we know what, you know, if we know what your design intent is, what your materials are, we can at least, you know, put a condition in there that will, you know, that we can move forward with that versus, you know, if it's something that you're still trying to figure out, and will tell us later, that's also fine if that's what you want to do. But it's important for us to know that, because that determines how we move forward here.
I think we can get some samples from vendors, from who worked, the actual.
So let me, let me try to help, help you. So if, if you, if you get samples and stuff down there, you gotta come back to support it later, or you could say exactly what you're gonna do right now to find it, so that they can make it a condition of the approval. And then you get an approval tonight.
I don't have any problem with.
I get that, but we, for the purpose, we just need to be explicit so that that, that we know, and we can communicate that to the, you know, when we're looking at the final plans and the building inspector, when they're going out and checking, make sure we've built the plans. So it just has to be either completed today, or you can come back later and get it completed.
And later means September.
Yeah, I, I think the owner's very happy with that. She gets her stucco, that's, that's very important, so.
I guess the question, we're not, we're not designing this, right? We're, we're asking you to tell us what you're proposing now.
Would we all, would we all stucco, and colors, and, you know, be similar?
I don't think that's specific enough, unfortunately. We, we need more specificity to the, yes, to the other materials, like, uh, the chair requested more information on.
The what requested?
The chair.
The stairs?
Chair.
Chair.
I'm actually a person, did they get a chair, but.
I understand chair, okay. It, it'll, you know, the only thing to do is, we could, we could submit a shop drawing, and if you want to see it beforehand, we understand what you want, and we're gonna try to do all the facade pieces trimmed.
So, so, maybe, let's try this, let's try and understand, so you're talking about specifically the stuff that's around the molding, around the actual windows, right?
Around the windows and around, actually, you know, there are, around the roof, around the kind of portico, over the entrance, there are vertical elements. I, which I read on this elevation as all being, and maybe I'm reading, I don't know if that's correct, all, all being the same material and color, maybe it is, maybe it's not, I just don't know from this drawing.
It is the same color, only the window trends would be different color. It looks like the shingles are also gonna be new.
The roof, the, the rooftop.
Asphalt thing, yeah.
And, and I'll be quite honest, I actually think that they're very clear in terms of the window design with the, with the concrete bolt, and I think that's quite nice, and I, and I, and I'm okay with that, I think I'm really looking more at the non-stucco materials on the facade, which I just don't know what they are right now.
The color and the material.
Stucco white.
True, true.
Yeah, okay.
And what is the material?
Well, so she can go with the painted, or we do the trim and the stuff, if it's done, you know, so what?
Yeah, you're talking about taking the, the trim around the, the eave of the, of the roof line, and using stucco to do it? Yeah?
I would, I, I would not want to see that as stucco personally, I think that the idea of wood or a similar painted material is, is a, is a fine idea. Not sure how I feel about white, but I would defer to my colleagues here as well, and I don't feel that strongly about that one there.
I'm with that.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would agree with Seth's comments, I think that it's just trying to distinguish the material, the material of the, the, the fascia elements, and I, I believe that, you know, like, white, I think will be better, like, contrast, you know, sort of, uh, in a way that may be drastic, but I like, I actually like that on to color houses, but that's, that's not my, that's a preference, that's not my preference, it's just, I think that it could be flexible, but I think it's really about, like, you know, what is it that you want to see on, on the, on the, and how do you envision?
And stuff of the.
I just know about the color part, but I don't know what materials go on there.
I, I understand.
So has the board determined that it would rather see a wood rather than stucco? Yeah?
Yes, yes.
And the color is, where the, yeah, white or the property, is that okay?
Okay, I mean, I.
Because I'm not really sure.
There's a lot of, yeah.
It's drastic enough, so it's by neighbors, you know, the surrounding area.
Yeah, okay.
I think that'll punch out the outline and, you know, the state.
Yep.
I just want to go real quickly back, so I can make sure if they're on it, the window details can be made out of stucco, correct? And it's gonna be the same color as the other stucco, correct? It's gonna be architectural detail change, but not a color change?
Color change, we were thinking of doing white around it?
White?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, hey, then, I would, I would, my, my only comment would be there, if you're gonna do a contrasting material around the, the windows, that should be consistent materially with, with the other contrasting materials, so you don't have too many things going on. Which I think is, you know, you're calling, I, I guess I'm, so reading this as a concrete bowl, it's a brick mold type, around that you'd have another, another window trim. It could be any material. I think that the detail there looks fine, I think, uh, if you can clarify a material. Thanks for the, you know, I, I don't want to confuse this any desire anymore, I, I want to move forward here, because I think we've gotten to a good point, but, uh.
I just have one last, other question here, I remember you weren't.
Yeah.
Farce to this.
So that element is also part of this new.
I mean, it's not totally different, right?
Portico, correct?
The previous emissions did have.
That's the original, right?
So that, these are gonna be, I guess, to be. If you could provide some detail on this as well?
That was part of what I was talking about before with this alternate material on that portico, which obviously is not stucco. It just.
That's just wood.
Painted white?
We haven't painted it yet.
But that's the intent?
Yes.
We're close.
And then what is the color of the roof going to be?
I think it was submitted before. I think it, we don't, sorry, we don't think what it was submitted before for the roof color.
Yes, it currently says that to be the same.
Whatever currently there, that's the color we've been using.
You're saying existing.
That exists, that existing, and that's existing in terms of what's there right now, the existing.
No. So you're not changing, so you're not going to get, you're not changing the roof, that's existing there for the.
Yes, we also put, so for the new extension, we put the roof that matches exactly with what was there.
So the, there's, there's a roof up there right now that is in existence.
Yes.
So you don't need a new roof?
You don't need a new roof, because you've already done that.
You already done that element of it.
Yeah.
So you're coming back mid, so, yeah, you're coming back mid instruction essentially.
Yeah.
So you're gonna match the existing.
All right, gotcha.
Okay, that's clear enough that we can include that.
Yeah.
Okay. And just to clarify, on that portico, which is part of the wood elements that are reading on street facade, is all wood and is white, and that would include that little, like, lip around the bottom, which I guess turns into the riser of the top stair. And then the deck material on that portico?
It's wood, and it's already done.
Okay.
So the only thing they're changing is the cut, is the stucco finish.
Okay. I say already, so this is all was reviewed as prior to the prior previous, yeah, previous PR, okay, um, all right, I just move this forward, we have a motion to open a public hearing of this.
Eric Talbot, I make the motion, open up a public hearing.
Michael Aronson, second.
Any objections? Objections, public hearing is now open. Is there anybody here to speak in the public? They don't see any hands, there's somebody here to speak for this application, we have motion to close the public hearing.
Michael Aronson, motion to close the public hearing.
Nina Aaron, second.
Any objections? There are no objections, the public hearing is now closed. So I think we have a, a list of conditions that we need to, just take into consideration here, but as long as we're on the same page, we're gonna accept the change to a stucco facade, that the stucco would be a, a rough-hand tool stucco, not a smooth stucco. That the stucco, that, that the trim elements on the facade, which includes the fascias, it includes the window surrounds, it includes the portico wood elements, of course, it'll, it'll all be a white wood material. I don't know if I'm missing anything on that. That's, uh, that's where, where we landed with this. That's, that's where, where we landed with this. So if we're on the agreement, we have a.
Um, so kind of the, the windows are in white, but not wood.
Yeah, I mean, that's a change from what they're proposing on what they're.
What they're proposing, yeah, so that, that detail actually shows what it says, brick, it says concrete mold, but that's, that's not a material, so it's a concrete mold or brick mold. You're referring to a, a molding that connects the window to the surrounding concrete or brick. So that's not a material statement there.
Oh, okay, so this is going to be wood, not, not molded out of the stucco?
The window is already done. So whatever was, the only thing they're going to do is the trim would be white and stucco.
White and stucco. Okay, the board's okay with stucco on the, on the white. All right, so the, so the wood elements with the exception of the windows. So to be clear, all the trim elements, including the fascias, the portico wood elements would be wood, the window trim would be white stucco. So we have a motion to approve it with first mission.
Michael Aaronson, motion to approve the conditions that's outlined by the chair.
And all the waiver, say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes for nothing, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Right. We are now up to item D on the agenda. This is seventy A, Proven Avenue. Planning board fourteen dot sixteen and VAR nineteen dot fifteen. So the application. Great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Introducing.
Good to see you again.
Tribute to others, Eric U, our good project, Robin Corky, attorney for the project. This project was, is a mandatory site for approval and can be, we have approvals in November of two thousand nineteen. Both the original project that we approved, there were certain items that we have now maintained, we have obtained from the original approval. We still have couple apartments, which is same combination we have before, which eight one bedrooms, two two bedrooms and two studios. We, we have several reunit that have been selected originally and see which the corner ones, both of those number of parking spaces. One more please. In this ground here is kind of four, we show you at the bottom what was originally approved and at the top what is, you know, proposed now. And in red lines on the top, it kind of superimposing what was the original approval. Number of parking spaces again, were twenty one original, we're thinking twenty one. We relocated the location of the handicap accessible space in the client to have it closer to the entry and to the stairs. The power of parkings, not in the same size, same size as original, we did it oversized to allow for, to move around better. Some of the items that were requested at the resolution was the private car company, which was still on P. They want to load units on the HVAC, HVAC units in the window, they're still maintaining that. And there was a horizontal sun shade grill along, between them that is still is maintained as well. The item that we have changed here was the trim colors. The exterior wall written were seven gray and brick, it's dark combination. And the windows were Anderson. And it was a let, let's tell unfortunate about. So again, just to go over the changes, there's a slight change in the size of the building. It's actually the footprint of the building is smaller by a hundred fifty per feet now. The parking at the rear of the building was open to above. It require rail and protection from the adjacent property. So now that was covered with, incorporated into a patio. The floor panel layout has been modified to accommodate some of these changes. And we did go over with the building inspector and it does comply with the habitable space requirement for the village. Some of the spaces, the architectural spaces were, like the commercial space was reduced to accommodate some mechanical requirements. And the changes in the architectural is mostly the finishes. And there was a door added to the side to access the mechanical room for the, from the exterior. The less time that went from the architectural view board, there was a, a lot of work put into the layout of the front facade. And it's presented to the street. We did have, to go back to, if you could go on, we have a rendering still, so. So these renderings show the bottom is what was originally approved and then at the top is what is proposed now. Again, the main elements are all kept, the finishes is what changed in the front. Now we're using an EFS material now. And there's, at the side of the elevation, there was one raw window that were removed when we did the new layout. But this is, and this is the stucco finishes that we're proposing. It will look like the original stone finishes were, were installed, which is now we're doing in the EFS material on the stuff, dark and light color. We did, I mean, rendering of the rear.
Can you speak a little bit more about why, why you're making these changes and proposing them right now?
Most of the change was when we did this originally with the board, most of the material changes were done with the prior owner. The property changed ownership and then with the material costs. Originally this was a micro reconstruction, then we had gone to wood friendly construction. And due to the price changes, the current owner, his business is concrete, so it was financially, that is a question for him to do the building and the country.
So, so what we're looking at right here is a change from, is this, this, the construction system changed a couple of times over the iteration of the facade. And is this something that's been looked at by, by building staff, that this is something that's?
On going, reviewed by engineering and building, and it's ongoing to the potential, actually apparent structural issue.
Yeah, so there, there's one major element of it that needs to be mentioned here. So we're having the plan reviewed by, and as I can saw them to make sure it's compliant code, one of the issues that have come up is an issue of secondary need egress. So that, we anticipate that that's going to have significant impact on the, you know, the interior layouts of the apartments, which would, you know, result in changes to a lot of the, whether or not they're going to be able to have those space requirements. And so until they make those changes, not they, we really don't have like a final plan from them.
Okay.
So I think the goal today is just to kind of start the conversation and we're going to have to come back.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, so we're, I mean, we're looking at, just to be clear, so we are going to go back and have to look at site plan, we'll have to look at, you know, the VAR, I guess, today's description really focused more on the VAR changes. So it's certainly helpful for us to see those. And I agree, I think if there's other pending changes, I don't want to talk too godly, start moving too, too deep into this when we know that, or when we're concerned that there could be further changes down the road.
Yeah, so the, one of the elements that probably won't change that maybe they can talk a little bit about today, just kind of trigger this is that they see, you know, they had one set of approved plans, they constructed a floor that was not on those approved plans. The purpose of that floor was to add another element to the project, the, the deck.
So what is the title?
Yeah, title, so we want to talk a little bit about that. That's an element of the site plan change that. And, and that's probably not going to be affected by the secondary egress.
Okay.
And also, I was, I was saying, the board is, they are being with the logs and the, that's.
Well, so the, again, if you're going to have a secondary egress, you need to provide that. There might be some changes, so.
Right, but there was also, I mean, we are also looking at a review in our end, which we, you know, if we disagree that the second means of the US code wise and required, then we might have to, because we didn't wrong review, so not sure that we can end up with some egress.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're listening to building staff here on this, on this question, and I think it's important for us, you know, if there are going to be, we're reviewing site plan, we're reviewing VAR. I mean, you know, we, we still need to go through both of these items and, you know, I, I don't, I want to make sure that we're not putting the, you know, the, the horse in this case. And if there are going to be changes to egress, certainly that can change, A, if it changes the units, that changes, you know, kind of how that's expressed on the facade as well. So, hey, first of all, it's just very helpful for us to see this and understand where this project is and where it's going, and I think it will make it easier, I will move forward with this to, I think, to move quickly. Once that additional information comes to us, but, but where we stand right now, I, I think it's important for us to not, not get ahead of ourselves.
I just met, the, the footprint of this building is already, it's already there. So if we needed second definitely need to egress, there's some internal changes, some layouts in the building, if there's not going to be twelve units, that the layout of the plant, of the building is there. The facade, we were talking about that finish. We'd like to get some closure on that issue, which won't be affected by, I don't believe, anything as to secondary egress. It's not going to affect the front of the building, it's not going to affect whether it's stucco or stone. The issue that we also have, which is a, a major issue is the deck in the back. Again, which I don't believe is going to be affected at all by the secondary egress to there. Kind of awkward to say, but it's already there. So we're looking to move this along, address all the concerns. The issue of the secondary egress was on a review when we seen earlier. I mean, I don't know, maybe about Friday maybe, or, I don't know, yesterday. So it's sort of, okay, we, we haven't really analyzed it and literally it hasn't been raised by the village inspection or review before. And it wasn't raised when the other, other plans were done as a modular, which was twelve, and that was all reviewed statewide. And they all met the state inspection standards on those plans. We didn't go with the modules, which is a contract issue, not, not anything other than that. So we have to look at that a little more carefully. I know that was an opinion raised by the consultant detained by the village. But I'm not sure they're right yet. They may be right, and if they are, obviously we'll address. But that issue, I don't believe affects what we're talking about tonight are the two issues, which is the side, the finish of the building and the deck. Anything else that really has to do with, you know, compliance, obviously we have to go with that. We're not, we're not going to sit there and say we're not going to be compliant with the code. But that's not going to change the footprint. We're not moving it. I don't, I don't think any of the asking is to move it, it's there. So we'd like to at least get that piece of it done, because there's a awful lot of things hanging out on this building that have to get resolved. As many as we can get resolved, it would be helpful to address those remaining issues that, that we can do. And I saw that jump off the page to me when I saw that secondary egress, I said, where did that come from? I really haven't had the opportunity to investigate it. I'm not saying it's wrong, I just, I haven't had the opportunity to investigate, I think JP had. Or our own consultants that we have, but this was never raised before, which, I don't know, a lot of people looked at it, all of a sudden it popped up. Maybe they're right and everybody was wrong. But we would like to, if we can, not disregard your concerns. This building is not going to be finished or moved forward unless those concerns are addressed. At least if we can knock these things out of the way, it's just, we'd like to get some move, that's all.
And, and your, your points are noted and I understand. I think it, it is kind of our responsibility to kind of look at this, kind of, and given the fact that there's a lot for us to review, there's potential for changes that may, you know, that may or may not come, you know, result in any changes, but we don't know that where we're sitting right here. We're still going to have to come back and revisit this. I, I think it's important for us to take care. I think the way we're, we are moving this forward because we're listening to this, we're seeing all of these changes. And so when it comes to a point where, where we're more comfortable about where the project is and that there aren't going to be subsequent changes, it'll be much easier for us to, to move.
I, I, I don't disagree. I don't, I totally understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is if you walk over there today, you see a big piece of concrete, you see a building there.
Yep.
That we know, with the decision, and that's kind of change, that's, that's a different thing, but that we know already. We know there's going to be a side on that building. Is it going to be this color? Can we use stucco? That's, then that could be put aside, we can look at something else. What is the issue with the deck? Is that going to be a pet of any other requirements regarding that deck? Then we can deal with that. All of the other things have to be dealt with, I'm not, anyway, just regarding, you're a hundred percent correct. You know, but that's not going to change the box. The box is there. And, and so that, if anything we can get, I'm not trying to be too crazy about this, we just want to move this along, it is just the.
I, I, I understand. I, I think, you know, to Hamid's point, if we could look quickly at the deck, I do want to, to move the conversation forward and, and I've heard of your saying, I know the boxes can change, but it is, you know, we, we have, we do have a lot to look at. We are going to, you know, if we have any feedback to give you that we can help you move this along, we'll do that too, tonight. But we want to zoom in on that, Hamid.
Yes, so this is the, the previous plan, which is uncovered deck here. And then the new plan has added a cover, essentially to that portion. There's also some changes here in the, the layout of the landscape here.
The retaining walls that are not?
The building itself, I think, is the retaining wall in this instance.
Okay.
Correct, maybe, maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong, but the building is functioning as a retaining wall, correct? Building is functioning as a retaining wall.
Yes, the, the foundation wall.
Foundation wall.
Yeah.
So there are more trees here, obviously, larger trees now. In the previous plan, there were more, smaller stuff. Couple of smaller trees. So that's a change.
But the idea behind this, behind the patio idea of the, you have basically from, especially from the adjacent building from the back, you, you were looking down into the parking spaces, you were looking down into fallen ground. And we need railings to prevent from anyone coming over or, you know, there was different, there was access to, challenge to access the back. So with having the patio over, I mean, this creates not only an area for the tenants, it creates, I think it's much more, and also it prevents an issue with cars coming over and having railings and something like that.
It does answer the quality of life of the tenants there. Now they have an outdoor space rather than broken avenue. It's inside. It does put a cover over, without creating a garage, it does put a cover over it, so you don't have noise of cars coming in, going, slamming or whatever.
It's a little bit. Also, when you see the red line, that was the, the original proof retaining wall. So you can see that we have reduced the amount of retaining wall, moved them away from the property line. Especially a base to seventy corner avenue. And I think all along the building, well, building, they never had a lot benefit by having that patio there.
Are you proposing that the top of the, if it's a concrete deck, that the top of the deck is meeting up with the, with the bottom of the slope?
Yeah, there will be a little slope there. There's a little retaining wall there, but it is basically accessible from the, from the patio. There's a little retaining wall there, but it is basically accessible from the, uh, from the patio, we will do. Access the, uh, the grade. Naturally, you can, uh.
Do you have a section or an elevation drawing that shows the relationship of this patio to the, to the grid? I mean, that's, you know, obviously a very sloped sign there and.
I think, I'm not sure there's, out of this, I think it's probably a little more. No, this was more, we're trying to do a comparison, but we can definitely provide it with that.
That would be helpful to see. And any one of the things I'm just looking at right now is, is, is the relationship to the, you know, of the, from the landscape to this, to this deck surface and how you transition from one to another. And, you know, drainage, what happens to water coming down from that hill when it, when it hits, when it hits here? Uh, that's an important thing to think about.
One of the things that was struck by tonight, listening to you on your other comments, this as a board, we're very attuned to how things work, how they present, and how they impact the community. This, that is an improvement visually for those folks living next door in apartments or coming down to the end, but for the people in there, it just changes. An open hole parking lot into a usable space. It wasn't thought of originally, we always thought of it as a great idea, but it, you know, it just changes.
We don't have any renderings of the actual patio building. You didn't supply this before.
No, that's.
We just got, we just got, we backed up, no.
Now, this is. This is the patio, this is not at grade.
Right. That's kind of the question that I'm trying to figure out.
Showing grass here, but this is not at grade?
It is, no.
That's, I, I think that's one thing we need to have an understanding of.
We need side elevations.
I actually think a section.
We don't even have side elevations of the patio. We, we, we don't even have elevations at all of the patio. So thank you. So we don't have the elevations of the side of the building. Are there any elevations or is the entire? I apologize, it's not apparent on the plan, other than, is this whole thing underground?
No, the part, the part, the whole part is.
Parking is submerged under the ground from the front of the patio, right where the building is. Yeah.
Yeah, the parking is.
So this is elevated in the end, right? Well, we need elevation from that.
I, I, I think I would like to request a, a section through this, through, through the, through the backyard, going into the garage, into the building, out to Crowe Avenue. I think that's critical. I think as Hime is asking as well, obviously, side elevations, um, as kind of like diagonally less, but, uh. You know, side, side elevations of this new structure and, and back into the building.
Correct, so you see this is the elevation here, this is the side elevation.
Right.
So the patio extends here.
Yes, and the grade in the back is there.
But the grade doesn't start like here, it doesn't like.
No, no, this is.
It, it should, it sort of goes into it, so you, you need the elevation to pull over it. Correct?
We did have a section that's not part of that, but I know what you're saying, but it is.
But they weren't submitted, I apologize, that's.
They weren't, they were submitted in the original set, this, I didn't submit it for this comparison.
But this is different.
We have everything that you've submitted here, so if it's, it's here, then you can pull it from one of these.
No, I'm sorry, you have the original drawing?
The original that was approved years ago?
No, no, the original that was submitted.
Yeah, we have everything that you've submitted here, so you, you want to come and join with us?
No, no, I'm learning about the building, it's not part of this, ARV said, it's not that, we do have a section.
Alright, that's some best.
I mean, I agree, I think the patio is a good improvement, however, I think there's so much that we still have questions about. That it would be good if you could provide the documents that we're talking about here. Come back and we'll look at, at a fuller package. Like, I'm not really seeing the advantage of spending too much more time on it tonight. Because there's still a lot to be.
Any feedback on the, uh, okay, so we will need a section of the patio. But what about the changes of the materials and feedback on that?
So, I mean, it'd be good to understand the, the fact, the building materially a little bit more. I mean, the, you know, as far as the change to, you know, from stone to stucco, I think kind of getting a, you know, a better sample on that would be helpful.
Are we allowed to wing tip?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Physical. No, 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 I think.
It's a no force.
Yeah, so no force, but if you have physical samples.
Yes, we do.
No new submission, like, like this, this is, this is exactly what I don't want to happen at any meeting. See, everything needs to be submitted prior to the meeting, so to close to the agenda, so the general public who's listening. You go to the agenda and refer to the items that you're submitting here. So this is the, the heart of the problem. I, I understand that you're, you're trying to expedite it from your project, but we have that.
That we, oh, I hope that this was going to be given to you last week, somewhere along the way, it was, it didn't happen. Um, memos from me didn't get it to happen, it just didn't happen. I have to apologize for that. But, uh, we'll, we'll be able to get that, get that to you and hopefully for the next.
The physical materials, you can definitely bring in.
We had that at the last, we had the board at his office. He said, should we deliver everybody a sample?
The challenge of the boards, obviously, is that we have people listening on Zoom, we have video out there, then we have this board here, and we have the general public who might show it. So there's, a board can't service all of those entities, just why is the board about that?
And, and, and talking about materials that, that, you know, kind of moving forward, you've got this deck proposed with, looks like a couple of different materials. You've got a hard scape, and I don't know if it's a rubberized surface or something. You know, so, so looking at and helping us understand what, what that material is. PerbLa, if that's still proposed, you know, again, all of these elements, so we can. Work those together, and, you know, I think, you know, from a design perspective, looking at relating the material here to the, to the back of this, you know, this very white stucco. Building, I think is something that, uh, there's a lot of contrast there, you've got this, you know, this, this dark deck and this stark white stucco. Uh, so trying to relate those two to each other, I think would be really helpful to see. Alright, so, um. Yeah.
I was going to say that. I do think it's an improvement, but with more, with more.
Excellent, thank you, thank you very much.
So we'll revisit this in. Uh, yeah, that's kind of, I'm like looking out to see if we can open up a, if we can have a motion before we close this out. Open in adjourn, so, but if we can, uh, see if anybody's here to speak, if, if we can open a public hearing, the motions.
Eric Solit, make the motion to open a public hearing.
Nina, Aaron's second.
Objections, no objections. Do we have anybody from the public to speak to this? Looks like we do not, uh, move a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke, do adjourn the public hearing.
Michael Lawrence, in motion to adjourn the public hearing, Nina, Aaron's second.
Any objections? No objections, motion passes to public hearing, it's adjourned. Uh, and we will now move forward in our agenda to additional business. Um, starting off with, uh, planning board, year five thousand nineteen. Um, three twenty-one North Highland Avenue, uh, and this is a site plan approval, uh, excavation, bill permit, expansion for Atria, that's it, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, this is Ford, Adam Weckstein from Hockman Tortorella, Adam Weckstein, I'm the advocate. Laura Miller from Atria Senior Living is here. Roughly two years ago, your board approved a thirty-nine unit expansion to the senior living facility, three twenty-one North Highland Avenue. The Atria facility, it's got twenty-four assisted living units and fifteen memory care units. The resolution approving that was filed on September twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Over the course of the successive year, the world sort of stopped, and we were back here almost a year ago, seeking our first one-year extension that your board granted. Through September twenty-fourth of this year, two thousand twenty-one. So we're here, having, not being ready to pull a building from it, not anticipate being, being ready to pull it by September twenty-fourth. For an additional one-year extension to the approvals. Laura can speak to about what the intentions are with respect to the facility going forward, also the board. Wanted to hear more about what the expansion was, one sort of reflection of, refreshment of their recollection, she can do that as well. I know it's late, so whatever you'd like to hear from us or not to hear from us, we're happy.
Um, you just, I, I mean, granted, we've had a, a very strange year, maybe to just speak to, to the, you know, any progress or any, any changes or, or movement towards building a permit that you've made. Understanding what's been going on in the.
Yeah, well, we actually closed all of our buildings because of COVID, so we haven't even had anybody in for any, uh, sort of entitlements, like, nothing has changed since what you've seen, but. Uh, we, we focused solely on testing and, and then really the game changer was in several in the vaccine available, so. Now we're opening up and we're starting to review the designs again, and we feel like, based on what we had and what we showed you, that we can continue with this, the free store expansion. Um, you know, to increase the units, and then, um, we know this, the demand is still there and there's not enough supply, so we're focusing on just. Keeping with what we presented, but, you know, fully going with the, more of the design plans, um, so that we can submit those to the building.
Do you have a, like, a timeframe in mind at this point?
Well, no, I, I would, it's probably safe to say that what, what we had, what we worked on before we kind of stopped, we'd probably say. Uh, by early next spring, we would be ready to do something, you know, get building plans submitted, but, you know, I can't give you a concrete date, but that's. We definitely like to be under one year and, you know, closer to, you know, as soon as possible, so.
Well, this is your second extension, right?
It is, yeah, it's the last, and we know it's the last and final one, and so really just kind of, you know, just tugging on your heartstrings that. It was beyond our control, um, you know, and, you know, we are back to, you know, to, you know, move forward with it. We just need your support to give us this section.
We want to just look at, just kind of refresh everybody's memories.
Yeah. We, we have, um, four buildings in, um, in Westchester County, and we have twenty-eight in State of New York. So, oh, we're in Westchester County, there are about five hundred and thirty-five Russians with us and, um, three hundred employees from Westchester County.
I, I was just gonna say, it would be helpful, because I, I think there's maybe only one board member here that was, was here for the, if we could very quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, run through, just, just the drawing.
So this is a former hotel, and in two thousand and nine, we presented to the planning board here, and we, uh, completely renovated this building. We actually had to close it because we did so much structural, um, things and so many improvements to the building. And when we did renovate it, it became, um, elite certified building, silver, so that was in, um, two thousand and nine. Um, and it just continued to perform well, we always had great occupancy, it, people used it as a resource, even for the swimming pool, it was always a community resource. Um, so in this building, we do provide assisted living, um, that is assistance with daily living, it's a, it's a social model. Um, it's not medical, and then we also have the memory care for residents who have dementia. Um, and so when we came here, we were able to expand our offering, and so then, based on the site, we have, uh, over ten acres. That we wanted to be able to, um, expand, and that's what we brought to you last, in September.
Yeah, we can just fast forward to the site.
Yeah, there's a site.
Yeah, I think if you were helping this.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't block anybody's views, um, and we had it, you know, we would confirm that the noise was not an issue based on what was surrounding it. Parking wasn't an issue, um, it was basically just, you know, a logical fit if you wanted to do something there, so. That's where we ended up. Um, and then there's just a little bit more, you know, why we're doing this is because, you know, the tsunami wave is coming, you know, the demand is still there. There's undersupply in Westchester County, want to keep people here in their own community. Um, and, you know, even independent, all of our buildings are a hundred percent backstate residents and employees. But there is a shortage of caregivers in the greater community, so to the degree that we can fill that need is what's important, and that's what we'd like to do, but. Um, again, we need the expansion, you know, in order to do that, the extension, that, so, um. This just shows you some more about what we do, um, if, you know, senior living and, um, you know, New York has always been a big focus for us, it's been great. And, um, you know. This is our, you know, our resident basis here, um, and we just, again, provide the independent living, the, um, assisted living and the memory care. That's our buildings that are nearby, um, to you also, Darien, Ryberg, Prior Cliff Manners down the street. Um, that's one that we also redeveloped several years ago.
Just as if you look back at the site plan, the area towards Route Nine, which is closed in, is the memory care units and the. Two wings towards the Hudson River are the regular assisted living units that were approved. It is obviously full zone.
Thank you guys, I appreciate the, the presentation. For, for an extension, do we have to do a public hearing, is that?
Um, yeah.
Okay, so, uh. We'll open this up to a, a public hearing, a motion.
Well, Aaron's in motion to open up the public hearing.
Eric Solit, I second the motion to open the public hearing.
Any objections? No objections, motion passed by, consent, is there anybody here from the public? Chairs, appears there's nobody here from the public speaking's application, and motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, Michael. Michael Lawrence in second.
Objections, no objections, motion passed with consent, that public hearing is closed, and I have a motion to provide a one-year. Extension on the previously granted site plan and excavation and bill permits for this expansion.
Right, thank you.
Motion to approve the one-year expansion, extension for the expansion and.
Excavation. It's like what they said.
Michael Lawrence in second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a nice.
Alright. So we actually have a screw hole to finish before localize. I want to do it. Okay, so let's let Stuart, let Stuart go before we. Alright, so, we're just going to go off the agenda real quick, we're going to skip over to I C, which is local law eight. Um, and I guess I'll let Stuart just kind of give us the rundown here.
Thank you, Seth. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all, even remotely if it is. This is proposed local law eight, it is a, it is a requested change to the zoning code. And unusually, it is a change to the zoning code that does not involve the planning board. Uh, but does require a referral to the planning board. What this would do, it, it has two sec, two parts to it, the first is create a new Article sixteen, which would permit what we're calling administrative adjustments. Effectively, what that would mean is that the building inspector could grant certain, if you want to call them minor variances, essentially. Up to ten percent of the bulk variance chart that we have at the back of the zoning code. Uh, so that those applications would not have to go before the zoning board. We see this primarily with setbacks, which is where you see this in almost all cases, sometimes we see it with decks. It is particularly prevalent when people are about to sell their homes and suddenly discover that they are non-compliant for certain reasons. So if it's within ten percent, uh, the building inspector can grant the application. He does have the opportunity, or she, to refer the matter to the, uh, uh, full zoning board, if so determined. There are limitations with regard to this, the first is that, uh, an administrative adjustment cannot be used to increase the number of dwelling units or bedroom capacity. It cannot change a permitted use, it cannot change requirements for public roadways, utilities, or other infrastructure. It cannot change a requirement where already there has been a separate administrative adjustment or variance. So if you've already gotten the variance and you now have to come back, you're gonna have to go back to the zoning board, so, uh. Uh, and we've had that circumstance where someone gets a side yard setback. They do the work and they suddenly discover we are still six inches short, well, unfortunately, they're gonna have to come back. Uh, it also will not allow a change in parking requirements. So for those particular circumstances, uh, you would not be able to get the adjustment, but, uh. This is something that's been discussed with the Board of Trustees, it's been discussed with the. this is something that's been discussed with the Board of Trustees, it's been discussed with the building inspector as well as with Jaime and Amanda, and this would then allow for, uh, again, an administrative adjustment, removing things away from the, the zoning, uh, the zoning board. The second part of this proposed amendment is, uh, to, uh, basically, well, what it would is to extend the period of time for a variance from the current six months to a year, and to basically limit the number of variances to two, uh, at this point, a number of extensions to two. Currently, there are no limitations on extensions to variances, but variances now only last for six months, and it is very, very common that a, an application comes before you folks for site plan, needs variances, you refer to the zoning board, and the zoning board grants the variances, and by the time you have granted site plan approval, the parties have to come back to the zoning board already to get an extension of the zoning variance. So this would, in essence, put it on a same timeline as would be with site plans. Uh, and also, as I said, it would allow for only two zoning variance extensions, which is similar to, as we have with the, the site plan. So both of these would, uh, we think make it easier with regard to, uh, to applications, particularly with regard to minimal, uh, side yard setbacks, uh, and also with regard to just procedurally uh, allowing for, uh, the one-year extension, uh, but only limiting that to two extensions, so those are the, uh, the extent of the, uh, what's proposed in local law eight, if this board is so inclined, uh, you know, we would request to have counsel prepare a, uh, a, a reference letter back to the, uh, to the planning board, to the, rather, to the Board of Trustees, so they can then schedule the necessary public hearing, uh, and do the referral to the Westchester County Planning Board.
A little bit of context here, um, this has been referred out to the planning board, the planning board is supposed to make a decision in sixty days and get it back to the Board of Trustees. You'll not be able to do that, uh, if you don't really make a decision tonight because of the, uh, August. Right, and so, we're asking if it all possible to make a decision on, I feel about this amendment, I consider that, um, the letter happened.
A recommendation, not a zip.
Yeah.
Your report.
I, I just have a quick question, there's no, um, public notice involved in any of these actions or extensions, is there?
The, the, with, with the, with the extension, uh, generally, an extension is not a public notice, because it's, it's just extending what is an already granted variance.
Right.
Uh, that, that would occur, with regard to the administrative adjustments, that would be an application, uh, uh, Michael, that would be made to the building inspector. But he does have the option of referring the matter to the full zoning board if he deems it appropriate. And that may occur, for example, if there are multiple variance requests on a particular application, and only one of them would be the administrative adjustment, it's likely that the building inspector may well just refer the whole kit and caboodle to the, to the zoning board rather than basically, uh, cherry pick which one, you know, he would, uh, you know, administratively grant.
But, but the amendment does not specify the number of, uh, you know, could he potentially issue unlimited number of, of zoning, uh, of, of ten percent, under ten percent threshold, uh, items?
If, in, in response to your question, Seth, if someone, for example, needed ten percent on one side yard and, uh, under ten percent on one side yard and under ten percent on combined side yards, yes, the, the, uh, the, uh, a building inspector could grant that, uh, because that would come within his, his purview, but again, he could also refer it out if he thought it was necessary, and there are criteria here as to the basis, uh, to, for, for him to consider to do this. Uh, so the board is aware, uh, I don't take full credit for this, most of this came from, uh, the recently adopted, uh, zoning ordinance in the city of Albany, uh, which has this, there are administrative adjustments in other municipalities, but Albany has this, uh, they also have a wonderful application, which I think we will be adopting, which essentially will lay out what, uh, what the person needs, and on the flip side, will have essentially everything that comes within ten percent, so the person will know what they can and cannot ask for.
I believe that was in the, was that in the, uh, agenda?
I don't think, I.
Wasn't it on the work session agenda for the?
It was on the B O T's work session agenda, and the B O T referred it over to, uh, the, the planning board.
I mean, would it be, uh, the, the application?
Yeah, what was there was the Albany, the Albany application was, was on the B O T's work session agenda.
But that application is just internal building department document, that's not?
That's what it's going to be, that's correct, it will, it will be online ultimately, but it will be an internal, uh, document for the building inspector and for the applicant.
Yeah. So, question I had when I was reading through it, it, it was a little bit like wording from the balancing test that the zoning board needs to do in terms of, of what the building inspector needs to look through, right, there were like five or so.
That is correct.
But only one of them, if I read it correctly, was saying only one of them needed to be met, I, I just wanted some clarity on that.
One or more of the standards have to be met, that is correct.
So that just seemed light to me, I thought, you know, I mean, these are pretty important points, and, and I, I was sort of wondering what the rationale was that it only needed to be one.
Because it's only done, because it's for only a nine of, for matters that are under ten percent. So in terms of side yard, for example, in the comprehensive plan that was just adopted, the side yard for, let's say, in the, uh, S seventy-five is, uh, eight feet, so for ten percent, you can sort of figure out what you're dealing with, you're dealing with a very, very small number. So it, it, you know, that, that's why, and again, he does have the option of sending it to the full zoning board if deemed necessary, and can als, there is also in here a, uh, provision that if someone feels aggrieved by the building inspector's decision, they can appeal it to the full Z B A.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah, that was my own impression.
And what's the mechanism for that, that appeal, I mean, is that?
So, it's the same thing, is it, uh, functionally, if it, building inspector really has kind of two choices. Functionally, he can either approve it or he can kick it to the zoning board appeal, so it, it is not practical for him to deny it. It, it would be only practical for him to either approve it or send it to the zoning board appeal for them to make a decision. Uh, so if he denied it, then they could appeal his decision, or they could just apply for a variance the normal way to the zoning board. It's functionally the same.
No, but it, but it, so, there's no, but there's no appeals for a neighbor who says, you know, you're coming, you're, you're going, you know, nine inches into your.
Actually, Seth, there is, because the way it's worded is, the applicant or other person aggrieved or adversely affected by the decision. So if, in fact, a neighbor who, let's say, you know, had an issue with this, did not agree, that neighbor could, in fact, uh, you know, present an application to the zoning board of appeals, uh, and the zoning board of appeals does have the ability to, uh, reverse, modify, or affirm.
Are there, are there any costs on that, on that aggrieved neighbor to, you know, to your own people, I don't know, it seems like now, it's, it's kind of like a backdoor into the Z B A, where is that, it's just?
It's, it, that, we, the fee. If there is a fee schedule to be determined with regard to filing an appeal, it's something that the Board of Trustees would put into the fee schedule, it's not here yet. Uh, it's a matter right now that they would file an appeal within writing within thirty days of the filing of the building inspector's decision, uh, and then it is reviewed by the zoning board of appeals, uh, there may well be a fee that, that goes along with that, the, uh, the Board of Trustees at this point has not put that in, and generally, that, if that's done, you know, it would be a revision to the fee schedule, which is just a separate resolution that the board puts together, that does not require a local law.
So, uh, to Michael's point earlier about noticing, how would a neighbor know that, that this has gone to the building department if it isn't?
They, uh, let me just see. The applicant requesting adjustment shall file with the building, it's just the form that they filed, they, there is no, there is no notice provision with regard to the administrative adjustment, there isn't, to, to be honest, in no municipality is there, did I find any applicant, any applicant requiring a note, a notice on, on these ten percent. If this, if this board is of the view that there should be something there, it can be there, what we were trying to do was to cut down the expense, uh, because otherwise, you know, under the current zoning law, it's three hundred feet, so then you're gonna be, you know, uh, so which, the, the, the point of this was to sort of cut that back and to just give them a, a means, a means of doing that. But part of it is that, I mean, if the, if the, if the building inspector thinks that neighbors can be notified, obviously, he could, he could do that as well, but there is no specific provision in the code as proposed, which would be notice, because again, it was, it was endeavored to streamline the process.
Like, in that sense, it would be making it more like a land use board process if you're having to notify neighbors of the application for the building inspector, right, Stuart?
Right, because, yeah, that's right, because both your board and the zoning board of appeals, uh, you know, do have specific notice requirements and distance and things like that. Uh, this was not, uh, that, this was not put into there for that, for that particular reason.
Uh, can I just ask one, uh, a couple things that I noticed in just this conversation, just thinking about, um, uh, the law? Would, this law is not only proposed because there are a lot of applications coming for, I mean, before the, uh, zoning board of appeals for these small changes, but also too, there are a lot of not performing lots within the village, correct?
There are, right.
So, maybe I can try it, so, I just, there, this, this doesn't actually, there are not a lot of applications currently that are on the zoning board that are gonna fall under this threshold, they, I think the, the more important, um, component of this is that if somebody comes in and they have, you know, like in their seventy-five where they, they have, the, the change that is under ten inches, then it's, it's kind of like, the zoning board doesn't really see a lot of value in dealing with these applicants, they, they have no opposition uh, almost ever, and so it's, it's to help provide the applicant with a way to get their approval without having to pay the extra expense of notifying the neighbors, the extra expense of paying for the, the, the application fee, which is yet to be determined right now with the, with this application fee, um, and, and to save them some time and, and money, and so that's really what it is, because there, there are plenty of variances, at least a lot of response to the community. These types of very small marginal changes really don't, I mean.
Got it, so it's specific really to this, these small adjustments.
Small, under ten percent, the, the ones that were, we were really concerned about were parking. We don't want, you know, to, it, to have an administrative adjustment that allows to have less parking. We didn't want to have an administrative adjustment that allows you to have more units on property. We didn't want big, huge parcels to, to take this administrative adjustment and suddenly create a lot of opportunities for themselves. Uh, so this is, is, is really gonna help the small homeowner, it's not oriented towards big property, so the question about, well, what if somebody comes in with twenty different things, I, I think the concern would be like, if a big development came in with hundreds of units and they tried to use this administrative variance process, Joe has the ability to kick it up to the zoning board, this is, this is bigger than what this is intended for, and that's why it was written that way.
I, I think my only comment does come away from, from the, the kind of, yeah, sorry.
I, I just wanted to introduce this law, all right, when I was in town, and I see you guys finally in person, I, I figure I wanted to stick around here, because actually, this law, I brought it, I brought in front of store, so the village board about three years ago, always the one who actually initiated this, a lot of people, so. And that's basically part of the reasons is that, uh, because one of the things, maybe now, now on the zoning board, but previously, uh, talking to the community chair, talking to the chair now, small little things, to me, as a village board representative of our community, I felt that small stuff like this should not be going, it is a lot of space for, like, pretty much what I said, for ten percent of lax on the bench, so it becomes a hurdle for a small homeowner. So I felt that something like this and going through all this, a lot of municipalities, not, not many in, in, in Westchester, but to New York State, actually do have something like this, and one of the applications that was existing, the one that store, uh, of Albany, pretty detailed, and that's something that we'll get to, to do that hopefully after this, but that was sort of the idea, the concept behind it. And there is gonna be an application fee on, on this whole process, uh, it's not gonna be three hundred dollars, uh, like they have it right now, because it would simply be the purpose of having something like this, uh, for a homeowner, uh, so, that's just my two cents on this, uh, I hope you guys consider and welcome that.
Thanks. Yeah, no, I, I, look, I, I, I totally, you know, support the, you know, what, you know, trying to make this easier, and I, and, and I think the way this law is written, I think is I think, very protective, I think, you know, the one, maybe just one piece of feedback that came up out of here, the, the, the most important thing is, is kind of acknowledging that having an appeals process is gonna be pretty toothless, because if, if they've got thirty days to appeal a decision that you don't know happened, and then your, you know, neighbor, you know, eight months later builds his house, and, you know, you know, you have to do a first, you know, if you were adversely affected or concerned that the house was too close to you, it's gonna come, you know, that, that's the kind of, that's the thing that I could see happening. Neighbor comes to the building, says, hey, this, you know, I measured with my laser and he's like, only, you know, seven feet from my property, and that's too close, and you gotta make him rip it down and push it back, and he says, oh, actually, and then, you know, that, that's the kind of thing that I could imagine happening, you know, if there's a solve for it.
So often, so there's sort of two situations, isn't there, because often it would be, like you were saying earlier, I mean, I think about, somebody wants to sell their house and goes, oops, uh, you know, and it's an existing condition. And then there is, what Seth is talking about, where it's something that hasn't been built yet, and suddenly, you know, they're putting in the driveway, we're doing whatever, and it's that much closer, so.
So, there's a, you know, all right, so there's a couple of elements to this, and we could have kind of a discussion, so say, for instance, somebody goes and gets a variance, and then they build it, and then it's a couple inches larger, well, generally speaking, if they went to get that variance, that means that it was bigger than the ten percent, right? So they, they have to obviously go back and get a bigger variance, you have to notice your neighbors, have to go through that whole process. If, if somebody's coming for something that's small or administrative variance, and then usually, it, it's gonna be because it's only a couple inches, or perhaps that person built something according to the code, and then they determined at, at the time when they did that survey, that they were an inch off. So instead of having to go back and get variance for that inch that they were off, because they had received, you know, some, they built something they thought was built to code and accidentally draw the law, however, there, there was one thing that we talked about in the meeting, which was the instance where somebody gets an administrative variance, and it's not to the full extent of what they had available, some buildings are parking, and they get the ad survey, and they're still under that ten percent threshold from the bulk apartments, but they do have administrative variance, and so that's something, Stuart, that maybe, um, I don't, I don't know, you may want to think about that, I'm leaving, you may want to think about, is whether or not the, the need to go to get a variance, even if you're still under the ten percent threshold, but have been granted an administrative variance, whether that could be changed.
So if you exceed the, whatever was initially applied for the?
You exceed the administrative variance, the administrative adjustment that was granted, but still remain under the ten percent threshold.
Maybe that, you know, with the, with the logic of this law, that would still be administrative.
It would allow you to have a second administrative adjustment, but you'd still be under that ten percent threshold.
That was not done, that was not done because, very simply, if, and I'll be very blunt, if the applicant cannot measure or his surveyor can't measure correctly, the building, the building inspector has already granted it once, then let him go back to the zoning board, I mean, I, I know that sounds harsh, but the bottom line is that, that, that occurs when the surveyor simply made the mistake, let him go back then to the zoning board.
And then the homeowner could battle out with the surveyor.
Yeah, that, and that's, that's, I think that is kind of the hardest problem, you, you know, I know Joe, they'll put the state stuff out first, sometimes they, they come to it's a good job, it doesn't come up all the time, but it does come up often enough.
Well.
I think this changed service of community well, in the extent that, like, the government should serve citizens. I agree personally.
Yep, I agree too.
You have any proposed language that you want to put into the letter, or would you like to Amanda to put something together and then circulate it?
I think, I think that's, you know, I think we, we've all kind of set our, our two bets, uh, so, yeah, if you circulate that, then we can just, by email, just reply with, with our thoughts, so we can get this letter to the board.
Yep.
Good, all right. We do have one more item.
Bye, Stuart.
Thanks, Stuart. Appreciate it. All right, can, I know the minutes for the last week's meeting were circulated from the other motion to those minutes.
Do we have a forum for this in the next?
Do we need more than? Oh, I was not pressed. That's true. So we can, so we can just adjourn that for next, table that for next week.
You can, you can post them on, on a draft.
What's that? September, September. That's good. All right, getting adjourned. As we have a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Eric, I second the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Right, objections? All right, thanks, everybody.